Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Jack, that's why I'm here. Probably, I know, almost everybody is wrong. So, what we meet tonight is Todd Lamar, our Finance Director. Sue Jacobson here is here. Does the misery work for the Advisory Committee? As well as is our former Housing Director. Jay Talman, our Moderator is hiding back there. He's very shy, so be careful. And Jim Leehead from our Board of Selectmen is here. As well as Carol Green, our Town Clerk. I know there's a number of Energy Committee members here. And petitioner for the stretch code article. And I think that's everybody who's an official, official. And then we have the Advisory Board. Ryan, I can't pronounce your last name.
Pete Kowchuk.
Pete Kowchuk. Thank you all for coming. So this will be, as you can see, Katie from NCTV is here. This will be video and audio taped. And I'm sure they'll run it on NCTV and have it loaded up to YouTube. For anybody that wants to watch this in the future. So my plan is tonight is just kind of rather quickly go through the 17 articles. Explain them. Kind of give you maybe a reason why it's an article and what we're trying to do with it. Maybe a couple of quick questions as we go along. But I don't want to get bogged down in any one particular article until we get through them once. And then after we do that, which again should be pretty quick. And if you have specific questions about a specific article, we'll go back and kind of talk more in depth. Not intending to have debates about the merits of an article tonight. That's for town meeting. But at the end, if we want to get into kind of a free-flowing conversation about a particular article, that's, you know, we'll let that happen at the end of the evening. Further ado, I'll go through. And Todd, my Finance guy here. So Article 1 is about transfers. We do this at every town meeting. We're correcting some budgets or accounting for some changes in operations that have happened throughout the year. So we have the list of those. And I'm sorry if I have warrants up here as well as copies of this presentation. So if you didn't get those, feel free to grab those up front. But Todd, can you quickly talk about kind of what we're doing with transfers?
Jack, if we turn down the lights to get better contrast.
Meant to do that, thank you.
Is that going to mess you up, Katie?
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the transfers that we're anticipating. We have certified free cash of $90,538. That's the end of the year. We have to provide Division of Homeland Services' private revenue with our provisions. As well as what we receive in revenues, accounting expenses, essentially our retained earnings with certified free cash. You'll take certified. And this year, we had 1.5 million certified free cash. Some of that certified free cash really is for transfers. KP Regional Operating Budget, $129,201. We actually went to budget last year at the meeting. So we had to provide about a 4% increase for the KP budget. The increase is already pre-244. So therefore, we have $129,000 that we can take back from this KP budget that we originally anticipated. And then we have $1,200 committed in from a fire department code violation to the special revenue accounts. Those monies will be used for the fire department training. Where are those monies going to be going to? We have town administrator salaries. Need additional four hours to help that office out. With so many meetings that the administrators are going to be doing. We have talent salaries. We have a non-union component. And we've always been giving step increases on their anniversary dates, which is not coinciding with the July 1 date. So to switch everybody to the July 1 date, it's going to cost about $7,000. We're giving monies back to the Facilities Maintenance Department because we had to pull monies out of their budget. We balanced the budget for fiscal year routine. So again, we originally pulled out $60,000. We're giving back $30,000. Police Department salaries. Pulled out $29,450. We're giving back that amount for our salaries. As well as the fire department expenses. $16,008 thrown 17-208, which is $1,200 for the fire department code violation. If there's any questions, please don't hesitate to pick up your hand behind your shoulder. The Advisory Board Reserve. We had monies amounted at. That was to fund some software for our local departments. And then it's turned off on the other departments that we have. Be a little more efficient, especially with the licensing of the company. So that's going to put the monies back into the Advisory Board Reserve. It's the money board expenses. It's to hire consultants. Norfolk Public Schools, $67,806. That's some monies that are going back to the schools. It's covered two of the salaries that they had to cut from a previous budget. And then a small capital item. Then we're also pre-funding our snow and ice a little bit of $25,000. All in, $220,939. Those are the transfers. Question?
There's a question. Is the town administrator salaries that is a transfer because of the increase in salary due to?
We're having additional four hours a week to help the admin attend various meetings. Especially the visiting board. Provide information back to the advisory.
So it's administrative position?
Yes.
Not the town administrator?
No, it's the town administrator now.
Okay. And just a question in general on the warrant. The Advisory Board recommendations aren't listed on this? They did before, didn't they?
They're updated on the website, so they are on the website now. They should be in this package here.
This is just created on Monday.
I think it's Monday afternoon.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
And then just, I didn't highlight, but the little boxes on the bottom of those, those are monies, just kind of very layman's terms explanations of what those items are for as well.
Okay.
You done?
With the transfer stabilization?
Well, we want to pay bills, so.
We have no one paid bills. Capital expenditures. So this is items that we purchased. Things we have useful, even three years of war, in excess of $10,000. Some of the items include the information technology expenses. That's to purchase some servers that we need to be replaced. Library of facilities maintenance, $12,000. Just to repair a boiler. Town clerk voting machines. I actually asked Carol Green the other day to verify some of the assets that we had on the listing. Looking at the dates that we actually acquired those voting machines. That was quite astounding. They are quite old. So the town clerk voting machines will give us four new machines on the list. I can put in $21,690. Police Department vehicles, $100,000. That's two new cruisers. Fire Department vehicle duty truck. It's $190,000. That's for the on-duty truck, which will contain some hoses and life-saving equipment that's necessary. DPW, they actually have two dump trucks, both of whom are not roadworthy. So here the DPW, $144,100, which is actually down from the $165 that they originally asked for to provide them another dump truck. DPW F-250 pickup, $40,300. And then the Norfolk School, we're doing a building study because we have about 40 kids coming in. So we have a lot more, potentially a lot more kids coming into our system. So we are going to be going to do a study on point expansion on the Freeman Kennedy School. So that would cover that cost. Those are our capital expenditures. All that money will be coming from the certified free cash, 532-260. Questions?
Sorry, we have some other questions.
I think, sorry, I didn't interrupt you for one second. I think for Kate's purposes, many of them use the mic. Is that, yeah, so.
Really?
Here, we can hold, we can pass it on. But just writing to.
I guess my question is, the trucks, the fire department truck, the police truck, and whatever working DPW trucks there are. Are these a month net of the resale price that the police trucks are getting rid of? Or are we repurposing the trucks? Especially the police cars and fire trucks? Or are we reselling them and getting some sort of proceeds before purchasing a new one? You know, saving up for something you wouldn't, does that include the net amount there?
It doesn't, it does not.
It doesn't?
We generally sell them off separately. You know, to, once in a while, the DPW traded the vehicle. And for, in the most part, you know, they've reached their useful life. So they're, in the DPW's case, they literally have, you know, they welded stop signs to the floorboards.
But the police, and the police and fire trucks obviously could be probably repurposed or resold.
They are, in the police department's case, they have a, they have a number of vehicles that are the frontline vehicles that the officers go out and do the daily shifts in. Then they have a second level vehicle that are used for going to court or detail officers who are not on-duty officers, but for people who may be going with Verizon to, you know, to a street detail. And then they have a third level vehicle that is just in an emergency that, you know, if for some reason we have to call the entire department in for, you know, a lost child or something, we need to have a vehicle for every officer. And those are the ones that are, you know, the newer vehicles are for the frontline and then they get handed down. So by the time we get to that third level vehicle, they're there again and there's not unvaluing those. In the old days, we used to hand them down to the assessors and other departments that don't need vehicles that can go, you know, respond. But we've gotten away from that a little bit and tried to use more fuel-efficient vehicles. We have a little forward focus for the fire department now. That's probably the only other department we buy vehicles for, so. So at the end of the day, we're generally sending DPW vehicles to scrap. But if we have a vehicle that is working, we'll, we do go through the procurement laws, reverse procurement laws, and then we actually auction them off for, you know, using Unisipin, which is an online site. We auction those off and then the one to go back into the general fund. You can't, you know, the town meeting appropriation.
And just going forward, but those, those costs of those vehicles, do they include the high efficiency or high energy efficiency requirements in the strike code if that was approved during town meeting? Or will that, because it's not, I assume those numbers go up?
Well, a lot of those vehicles are exempt from that. The public safety vehicles, you know, large DPW trucks would be exempt. The vehicles that would apply to the, related to being a green community are more administrative. Yeah, if we could use the microphone just for NCTV, I mean, I also have a question, I guess, you know.
Oh, okay.
So I'd like to understand better exactly what's in the information technology. I think we could either talk about that now or at the end. And the other thing I'm interested in is the voting machines. As you're probably aware, there are bills in Massachusetts Legislature currently that would put in place ranked choice voting. And also, it's likely to be a question in the November 2018 ballot about ranked choice voting. And I'd like to be confident that if we buy voting machines and we're forced to use ranked choice voting or we elect to use it, that the voting machines we buy now would be compatible with ranked choice voting.
Carol? Would you have the.
Concept of ranked choice voting?
The concept of ranked choice voting, I'm fine, so, I'm sorry. I'm actually not beginning to get into the concept of ranked choice voting because it's a very outside possibility in Massachusetts. I, to be able to address the voting machines, my voting machines were from 1995 and 1996. I have some of the oldest machines in the state. The company that services them no longer produces those machines. So when I have to have them repaired, they do scrap parts off of something else. There's only two companies that make voting machines that are certified by the Secretary of State's Office. We price them, we completely price them both, they're both comparable. But there's going to come a time, and it's not going to be long, that something's going to break down. We're not going to be able to fix it. And with an election, you know, you just can't do that. I would assume, I may be incorrectly, that the state is aware of the question about ranked choice voting. And I would think that the companies that produce these machines probably have the ability to adjust the machines to that because they program the parts to go in them. And the companies that make these machines don't just make them for Massachusetts. They do make them for other states. So the possibility is there that they're already using it for ranked choice voting in other states. I don't have that for a backup.
I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't buy voting machines. I understand in the case of why we need them. I'm just hoping that before placing an order, an inquiry is made to verify that these machines that we're about to buy would in fact be capable of handling ranked choice voting.
I can certainly ask that question.
Thank you.
I was just curious, what technology do they use? I, you know, it doesn't, fine with me that we get new machines, though. I was just wondering whether those are the ones where you have a paper ballot.
It's still a paper ballot. They're sent through, they're just more.
Newer, yeah, okay.
No more, more efficient.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's all, yeah. Anything else about machines?
Is that replacing all of the machines?
Yes, I currently have four.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm actually, the reason I'm actually getting four, or even though we only have three precincts, I like to have a backup because that way if one goes down during an election, I can just put another one directly in. And it also allows for, as we grow, we're probably going to have to go to four precincts. We're going to have to do re-precincting at some point in time, hang those four precincts. Now I don't have to buy another machine. I can use that one. So I'm just trying to think ahead a little bit.
Yeah. Are you going to keep the old ones?
No, they actually, they do have a trade-in value to go back to the company that I'm buying them for. I did, I don't know, it's $2,000, I think. It's not a lot, but it's something.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask whether you wanted to talk more about information technology now or would you prefer to handle that at the end.
Alls I can tell you is that we're.
So the request is, I think, oh, hold on. So the request is basically the replacement of two servers. Servers typically have a life of about three or four years. Around a four-year mark for the two servers that we're replacing. So it's just a normal point of interest to replace.
I'll just do that.
So I'm really looking for more detail, like what are the servers being used for exactly? And I understand that there's often a limited life cycle for equipment like that. But I also know that often, in fact, when you use very much older, that it's not a life cycle. So a question would be what kind of problems or challenges that require us to replace it now rather than just, you know, it's a few years old?
I think, yeah, why don't we, I'm glad you're up with our IT Director. He's not here tonight. He will be, I believe he will be at town meeting. If not, certainly have an offline conversation. I can tell you, we, you know, MacGyver stuff, we try and stretch stuff out as long as we can. But we're getting more and more, the technology demands are getting more and more serious. And we're trying to keep our equipment, especially the servers, at a, in good shape. For security purposes as well as just for performance. Keep that.
So I'm not being critical about my idea, I just wanted to.
So whenever, so why don't you take that with you? If somebody has a question, just hand it to whoever has a question. We'll, we'll stand here with the standalone. The capital is just a water service vehicle. If you see the Rhythm, they have like a blue truck that has every tool in it that they can use. And so rather than our guys, you know what? We have the old COA minivan that we use as a, as a vehicle. And it's, you know, it's been retrofitted two or three times. And right now, it's the water department service vehicle, service van. So we're having, we're having basically a workshop on wheels that the water department can go out and when they have a water break or we're doing some work, they have all the tools with them and can fix hydrants, et cetera. And then a tack long trailer, it's just a small trailer that can has the other tools that they may need, that they'll bring on big jobs if they need. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
The Water Enterprise Fund, is that from the town water takers only?
Correct. So that's funded by water revenue, so hookup fees, water services, certainly water usage fees. So that's not coming out of the general fund. The first group of items was from the general fund. This is just from the water takers, the water users. Todd has the numbers. The general fund has a free cash balance of?
$684,263.
After?
After all our transfers. And the water would have the retained earnings available of $829,538.
So again, after the expense. So Article 4, very near and dear Mr. Lee, the card is the transfer to stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is our, is our savings account. It takes a three-quarters.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Two-thirds vote to transfer in or out of the.
No, only, only out now. And it's just a majority.
Huh, that's a good status here. All right. So a majority vote to go into the stabilization fund, and two-thirds vote to come out. Again, that's our, that's our savings account. We have just under $1.5 billion in there as of November 30th. And we're obviously going to add $250,000 to that. It's very important for us to have that. Obviously, it's our rating day fund if, if we even need to draw from that for some catastrophic events. But even more importantly, on a day-to-day basis, that's, that's an important factor that the bond rating, bond services look at for our bond rating. And that the better bond rating we get, the lower interest rate we get when we borrow. It's just, it's a good business.
What's the bond rating?
Article 5 is committee reports. I know the Public Safety Building Committee will have a discussion about, they'll give us an update on public safety project, projects, both at the Sharon Ave, which is the police station, and the Menacom and Regional Dispatch Center. And then obviously the fire department transferring the public safety building into a park. That money's already been appropriated, the projects are underway. Article 6 is part of the Municipal Relief Act from a couple of years ago. And we can adopt different sections of the law, so it's a local option. In this case, what we would be able to do is for any property tax bills that are less than $100 annually, we'd be able to bill them in one bill rather than send them out with the traditional four bills. Kind of makes sense, I think, both for the person who may have a small parcel that doesn't want to pay four times, but certainly from the treasurer's office to be able to just send that one bill rather than two and have to process four returns. I think that one makes sense.
A question, is that a fact?
Yes, sir.
So as you may remember, I've been taking advantage of the unit pay feature on the website so that.
I've never heard that.
So they can pay bills. And one of the things I very much would like to do is get a bill for four quarter repayments and then schedule them all when I get the bill, so I don't need to worry about them in the future. And there's been difficulty with that. And so I have no objection to this article. I would certainly very much appreciate if the unit pay process got changed so that all the four quarter repayments could be scheduled at the time that a citizen receives the bill.
Okay. Dave and I are very close on this issue. This next article is again proposed by the treasurer, and it's part of the Municipal Relief Act. And what it, process now is, we call it good standing. So when, when somebody comes in and asks for a permit, these are generally building permits that we're talking about. Somebody comes in for a permit, we have a process of going around to all the departments, including the treasurers, to make sure that the applicant is in good standing. In terms of what the treasurer does, they can look to see if they've any past due bills. Prior to this adoption, we have to wait until somebody's more than a year past due before we can, we can, you know, flag them, if you will. So somebody could be a year past due on a property tax bill, or they could be 364 days short on a property tax bill, apply for a permit, and we wouldn't be able to, you know, hold them up. So for collection purposes, we think it's more appropriate that if, what this would do is change the process that if you're past due at all, we would have the ability to flag you and not issue a permit. Treasurer would have the flexibility that if somebody, you know, we've talked about, especially with the Advisory Board, we've talked about situations where there's a, you know, maybe a home that has been inherited, they have a septic issue, and they need to have a poloseptic permit, get some work done, and maybe they're, you know, the parents or whoever had the home before was in a past due situation. The treasurer would have the ability to work with that person, either set up a, either set up a payment plan or certainly we're going to get paid taxes when we know that, when the house closes, so we're going to pay at that point. So we still have the flexibility to work with people. But this would help us in situations, and this, kind of the bigger situations where this comes into play is when we have some of the developers. You know, somebody who has a whole, you know, they have 14 lots that they're, they're nine months behind in taxes, yet they're still trying to pull more building permits. We would like to be able to manage those, those negotiations a little bit better. The other situation that we've talked about too is, you know, if a small contractor, just a home repair guy comes in, tries to pull a permit on behalf of somebody, and yet that person is nine months behind taxes, the, the small contractor isn't going to know that. Well, they may be working with somebody who, you know, so we're trying to protect the small contractor there and just let them know, we can't give you that permit because the person owes nine months in taxes. And so they may have to rethink whether or not they want to do business. So those are the two situations that I think of. The treasurer, you know, met with the Advisory Committee and, you know, certainly has situations that deserve to have some leniency. She has the flexibility to do that. But this is just allowing us to be tough with people that would need to be tough with.
So Jack, I went through some files I have. I flagged a question when we had our pre-meeting from Dave. Because a bunch of the towns that represent adopted this change as well. You're going to have, in the motion, I think we should make sure we say what the change to the bylaw is. So that the AG has to approve it. So I can help with that, or I'm sure Dave DeLuca can do it. Just make sure and delete whatever language. It's a great tool. All towns should use this.
It just makes sense. Thank you. Any questions, though? Article 8, 9, and 10 are road acceptances. And I intend to have some graphics up, you know, just to show the roads when they come in. But it's Keating Farm, so if we go up through the condominiums at the top of the hill, get into that, those roads up there. This is Castle Road, so it's right at the top of the hill. And then Meeting House Road is actually the area leading from the condos into that subdivision. And then Wild Holly is one of the cul-de-sacs off of Castle. So those roads have all been completed, they've been dropped to standard, they've pitched roads around, the DPW's inspected them, they leave their in town quality. Actually, they'll be above town quality at this point. So this is a process that we go through at the end of subdivision development, where we accept the roads and the town will then have the responsibility for them in the future. There's no monetary exchange. Some of the language in there about taking funds in eminent domain is there for legal purposes if we need to clear a title for some reason. But generally, they're just turning those over, those deeds and title, you know, ownership of the roads over to us in a very passive manner. Any questions on the roads? Hopefully, we'll see a lot more in the next few years. Our planner is trying to catch up on some old roads. David, you want to, you want to be my runner and just hand the mic back?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
So with the acceptance of the roads, are there any bonds that we're releasing? Are the towns releasing?
Through the planning board, they would have, they will release those before, at the time that the roads are completed. There's a process that the developer goes to the planning board and releases them.
Okay, but they were just completed, correct?
Correct.
About a month ago? Okay, so they'd be, the bonds were released before this goes to town meeting?
Correct. And it'd be a planning board process, not a, not a town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Town clerk position, this is an article we've talked about a couple of times, but this is actually sponsored by Carol. This is a request to make, to convert the clerk's position from an elected position to an appointed position. As you may already know, the clerk's position is real, is a, that's the only employee that we have in the town who is elected. Lots of towns, if you look at Franklin and other towns, they've converted a lot of their positions, you know, treasurer. you know, treasurer, clerk, some places they have accountant who's an elected. I think, and I'm sure Jay's probably seen it too. I think the trend is more and more of these positions are becoming more, you know, the clerk is kind of the old homie position. I know people have a lot of, you know, a real warm feeling when they think about the clerk. But I can tell you, it's not just, you know, the motherly person that you might have had in the clerk's office in the old days that just kind of took care of birth certificates and death certificates. And that's, you know, it was a pretty slow office. Now I can tell you, she's working on computers, she's taking care of census. She's, you know, there's more and more responsibilities in the clerk. So the idea of making what we call a professional position, an appointed position, is it allows us that if we have an opening, we can go out and hire somebody from anywhere. It doesn't have to be a Norfolk resident. We can go out, we can interview people, we can check their skills, we can look at their resume, and we can hire somebody who's qualified for the position rather than relying upon an elected position, which lots of times turns out to be a popularity, you know, obviously, it's an election, it's a popularity contest. And you may not be electing somebody who is qualified for the position. So that's the reason Carol brought it forward. I think all the selectmen, I know all the selectmen support it. I support it. I'm sure we'll have a lot of conversation about it at town meeting, but that's because some people like the tradition of electing. But we think it's important to have an appointed position.
Can you clarify appointed by who?
It would, because I'm a town administrator, all the positions in Norfolk are technically appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Unless, under some specific statute. I think the process that we're thinking about in this case is, and we do it for a lot of positions, is I go through a process and select somebody and then go through a confirmation process with the selectmen to sign off on that. Same as the police chief, fire chief, finance director. These are all mine. I have twelve reports. Meeting minutes, this again is brought to us by the clerk. And this is trying to just formalize the process to make sure that every board and committee in town is putting their minutes into the town clerk. And we're required to keep minutes. The best place for records to be kept is with the clerk. And so we want to give her a little bit of a stick to go and beat up on some road committees to make sure that minutes are kept in a secure place.
Question about that?
Yes, sir.
So this note, I guess it's, I will note this right, says that this does not specify how the minutes are recorded. If a board or committee decided to make an audio recording of their minutes, would that be acceptable?
No.
And if the board or committee never produced the minutes on paper, but produced it electronically, would it be acceptable to sign it electronically without a paper copy?
As of right now, it's not acceptable to sign them electronically. They need to actually have them signed at a meeting, have them physically signed. So the board produces the minutes. They get them signed when they're accepted, and then they get filed in my office. And then what happens to them from there is they get laser feached. So we have a searchable database. Because of the new public records law, it makes us also much more efficient in being able to handle residents' requests for that because a lot of times we can pull records up in a matter of minutes that people were, like, looking for. And they all get stored in the safe. So that's kind of the process. Once they're laser feached, then they get stored in the safe as permanent record.
So I guess my suggestion is that if the board or committee creates the records electronically, using Microsoft Word or some other word processing product like that, it seems it would be more convenient to go around and if they could pass it to the town clerk electronically than this word processing file. And with some way of certifying that it hadn't been approved by the board.
It might be more efficient, but as far as open meeting law goes and certification of minutes, that isn't the case as of yet. They need to produce physical minutes and they need to be signed.
I know that, I'm not familiar with public records law, so I can't say what's in that. But I'm pretty confident that the reason of such a requirement in the open meeting law is that it could be on paper or physical something.
Okay, I'd have to look at that. But they say that the minutes, then they have to be approved.
Yeah, certainly they have to be approved.
Okay.
We're on.
So I'm on the Board of Health, and I don't have an email address for the town, a secure email address. So I don't know how to sign it electronically. We sign the minutes at the meeting from the previous. And I think that's good system. Unless we have a secure website, that will filter.
So I'm certainly not desirous of debating it, but it would be possible to have a secure electronic signature.
Sure.
I guess all the things that you're suggesting are a possibility. It's just not the way it's done right now, and maybe could be looked at for the future. But, you know, going forward, we'll keep with signing them and turning them in.
Well, we do have, I agree. I mean, I think all good ideas, you know, some of the laws have changed in Massachusetts. You know, we can have remote participation. You can have somebody phoning in for a meeting. We don't allow that in Norfolk because the selectmen haven't accepted that. That would need to be accepted at the selectmen's level. But so things do progress, but very slowly. Article thirteen is a petition. I know a bunch of the energy committee is here and other supporters of this article. Again, I think, you know, I'm not an expert on it. I think if we circle around at the end and people want to talk about the stretch fund some more, we can do that. I know you've had some public forums and had some NCTV coverage of this. So I think it's up to the town whether or not they're going to support it or not. Yes, ma'am?
Just a Jebel question on why this is on the warrant as opposed to on the ballot? Can you explain the difference?
Jay, do you want to, I mean, that's the...
Wouldn't this be something that'd be on the ballot as opposed to on the town warrant?
I think general law requires it to just be a town meeting vote, so I...
It's just a legislative decision, which is town meeting. There's no requirement that it go to the ballot. So that's just under the law. So the legislative assembly is town meeting, not the ballot.
Okay, but this is restrictions imposed on all the residents, correct?
If we impose restrictions on all the residents by bylaws or even just simple votes of various boards all the time?
Zoning changes, zoning changes, bylaw changes are all legislative process. Article fourteen is known, and it'll be an interesting debate at town meeting. So because of, well, not because of, it was a follow-up to the statewide vote that happened, which allowing recreational marijuana in Massachusetts. Legislature opted to give towns the authority to restrict, ban, assail marijuana along with all the other related activities developed and et cetera. So because Norfolk, in our vote, in the state vote, but Norfolk's portion of that vote, we defeated that question. We have the ability to go at a town meeting and, in this case, a general bylaw. If this passes, we're going to go, we're going to ask for a zoning bylaw in the spring that's recommended by town council. But we can do that at town meeting. If other towns that supported the sale of marijuana, recreational marijuana, if they, if they actually supported it, then they would be required to have a ballot question. But we, because we defeated it, we just need to have a town meeting vote. So I think there will be a lot of, you know, there will be, there was a lot of debate at the advisory board. I assume town meeting is going to have a lot of vote about this. I know Mr. Leehan has some pretty strong opinions, as do I. I don't favor, I favor the ban of recreational marijuana, so. It doesn't mean you can't, we can't ban the use of it. That's the one thing we can't do. But we can ban a lot of retail activity. Article fifteen is...
Jeff? Just a curiosity question. At the town level, what was the split or direction of the issue?
I want to say it was like fifty-five, forty-five, somewhere, the marijuana question.
Fifty-one, forty-nine.
What was it?
Fifty-one, forty-nine.
Okay, fifty-one, forty-nine. So it was pretty close.
And Renton just passed a bylaw very similar to this, and their vote was fifty-one, forty-nine. And this town meeting unanimously supported this.
The ban.
Basically, it just says that you can use it because you have, that's the state law. We just don't want to sell it.
But then there's no tax money coming in.
Correct.
So and...
It's recreational, by the way. It's recreational.
Medical is...
Not medicinal. Not medical marijuana.
It's recreational.
It's all, it's all in itself, and there's some marijuana in the pharmacy or something back.
I'm not sure of the distinctions.
Oh, Jay, what would it, it would get Jake probably. You could sell the disc.
The disc is only at an authorized dispensary, and there are none proposing now at this time. There are some going in in the area towns that you'll see pop, you know, there's already one, I think, somewhat here bottom. Just so people know too, this is going to be presented a little bit differently. Normally, the advisory board makes first motions on things. However, because this was the selectmen's initiative and the advisory board is recommending against it, I figure it's only fair that the selectmen get a chance to support something that they put forward rather than put something forward in the negative. That may result in, if the advisory board so desires to have some kind of substitute motions, I will walk everyone through it. There could be all kinds of shades of gray on this. People have strong feelings about this. But it's going to be presented a little bit differently at town meeting than what we normally do. It'll still be the same rules of procedure, but it'll be the selectmen first at the mic in this one.
Any other questions? Pretty much. So Old Town Hall, I assume everybody knows Old Town Hall, it's down, Old Town Hall. It's, you know, we've shut that down, we're not keying it. The subject system is long gone. The recreation committee was, recreation department was the last kind of user of that building. And it got to the one where they, we needed to get them out of there too. So it's at the point where we've, we've talked about it many times. We've talked about tearing it down. But there's a, there are some reasons for zoning and ground following that we can't just tear it down if we want to have it, if we want to sell it in the future for, to put a building on. So we're selling it as is. I've got a couple pieces here. David, can I probably, Mike? Just very quickly, this, right below the one-hundred, that's the Old Town Hall. So we're going to carve, we're going to carve off this piece right here as a separate lot. And then this, so this is what we would sell. This is one engineer's concept of what could be done there. Either tear down and rebuild or significantly restore that building. Maybe be able to put a parking lot here with a septic system for whatever that's worth. This is, this is Old Town Hall right here. So we would keep the Old Town Hall parking lot. And we'd keep the, what we call the water department garage, you know, the fire department vehicles in there. And then we'd keep this trail that goes out to Old Town Pond. For those of you who haven't been there, you can at least walk out there some time. It's a nice little walk. Here's a path one all the way there. This is where there's a whole bunch of construction, you know, the one oh-six, one oh-eight Main Street. But so that's really what we're planning to do. What would happen is we would auction off the property or use some type of procurement process to legally advertise it and sell it off. And then that money would come into the general fund. We'd again come back to town meeting and decide what to use it, whether it goes into the stabilization fund or we reuse it for a specific purpose. That would be for town meeting to decide at some point in the future. But we think we can pretty easily get a couple hundred thousand dollars. But we think maybe even the building commissioner thinks it could be possibly up to four hundred thousand. So, you know, and then it'll be zoned commercial. So it could be a dentist office or other offices. Lots of different uses, I'm sure. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Donna, Michael?
Could you go back a slide? What is in the upper right? I see the town seal and then can't read it. And then the mission note?
That's just off of our G.I.A. system. It's a legend that has like reds fire department and stuff. So there's just a legend for different types of buildings. It's nothing, it's not like a footnote as to what we want to have a specific property. Any other questions? Article sixteen is a funnel. It's, so you probably read it in the article, well, maybe in the advisory board description. Talks about the, there's a piece of property, a house, person's house that was built on town property. So this is out on... Priscilla. And it's relatively small, by Norfolk standards anyway, relatively small lots. And again, I'll have a graphic at town meeting for this. But there's a, there's a lot that we took at some point a long time ago by tax title. Somebody wasn't paying the taxes, took it. Sometime, a period after that, I think in nineteen ninety-seven, somebody built a house on what they thought was the abutting piece of property. There were some mistakes made by the surveyors and engineers. And the house was built on what ended up being the town's property. So in order to, we've struggled with this for a couple of years trying to figure out how to resolve this. We knew that this is, this is probably the best solution. But we tried to find a quicker method and were unable to. Because we were kind of, we can't just swap property with them because of the procurement laws. You know, we have to go through a public, anytime we sell off a piece of town property, we have to go through our public bidding process or some type of, and make it fair for everybody. Obviously, we want to sell it to this one specific person. So this is asking for legislative approval to go around the procurement laws. They've agreed to pay us fifty thousand dollars for that strip of land. We think that's a fair price based on the, we have really no use for the land. But certainly, they have a, they have a use for it. So we're looking to try and sell them that property. Any questions on that one?
Do they pay taxes on the Old Town Hall, or not?
They have, they've been paying taxes on the vacant piece of property. And assessed at their, they've been paying taxes on their home. We were, it was in the wrong place, but, so they were, yes, they were paying. Now they'll end up with a bigger piece of property, so they'll be paying more taxes. But they were paying on one lot and one house even though they weren't connected.
Question. So assuming that passes at the town meeting, what are the next steps that have to happen in order to complete the process?
Very high-level steps are just, it goes to the legislature. The legislature ends up having a vote on it, makes a bill, and then gets signed by the governor, kind of law. Then it comes back to the selectmen to actually execute the transaction.
Thank you.
Should be quick. It's gone through House, the legislature's council as well. They've reviewed this. So it, you know, at least from a technical point of view, should go through the legislature rather quickly. Article seventeen, again, I should have a, I will have a graphic for this one. But if you, so if you can envision the, if you're looking at Town Hall, the left-hand driveway where the mailboxes are, right? Everybody know what I'm talking about? There's going to be a, they're putting a building, a building on the lot next to it, which is right on the cul-de-sac. It's actually going to be the credit union and some apartments above it. What the developer, developer went to the planning board and was working with our, actually, our former town planner, was working on a potential plan. And what they're, what they came, what the developer came up with and was proposing was having a driveway come out, you know, probably twenty or thirty, twenty to thirty feet away from our driveway. So it would be our driveway, then there would be their driveway, then be the roundabout. What our planner, Ray Goff, proposed was to combine those two driveways, have the developer do all the work so that their parking lot comes up to, you know, connects somehow. And again, I can show you the concept they came up with. And so that there's one driveway that comes out to the right lane. It's just for a traffic flow purpose. You'd rather not have two driveways side by side. Plus, you have the library parking lot across from it, so there's a lot of, obviously, you know, people coming from the roundabout. So this will actually move the driveway a little bit away from the roundabout as well. So we just think it's a better solution. I'll tell you, there'll probably be some debate. Some people think we're giving something away to a developer. I strongly disagree with that concept. I strongly disagree with that concept. I think we're just trying to make a better traffic flow that's good for everybody, and the developer will bear the cost of all the work there.
Aren't the mailboxes right at the end of that street?
Yeah.
I'm just so like, are they going to, like, I might move those, right? So the people who are stopping to pick up their letters, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good idea. We could certainly move the mailboxes up closer to Town Hall, so that...
I'm just feeling like the people stopping and then stopping traffic.
It's a good, good suggestion.
So then going forward, who's responsible for picking up that piece of property for snow removal, for resealing and...
Just, well, I'm sure we'll, I can't answer that. I love to, I want to have the drawing in front of me because I, you know, I think, obviously, we'll just plow out our driveway the same way we would have used to. We won't go into his driveway. I'm sure they'll probably do the same thing when the two come up to a T, you know, that one spot will actually get plowed by both entities. You know, as far as, we'll have to have some cost sharing for repaying it at some point in the future, but, you know, that's a, that's probably a fairly minor cost on the big scheme of things.
So it's not a big parcel of land?
Oh, no, we're just talking about probably twenty-five feet of it, of where the two driveways will connect and then come out to the main lane together. It's not, it's not a big...
Jack, this is my main point. There have been, there have been people that have suggested doing this to advantage. I'm sure Jack mentioned this. I just want to restate this. That is absolutely not the case. He doesn't care. He submitted a plan with a separate driveway, and he's indifferent to this. This one came from our planning department. This was in our initiative because, as Jack said, it was, to us, it makes a lot of sense because it makes it much easier from a public safety perspective. We don't have two separate driveways with two separate cars coming out at the same time. This was not driven by the developer. This was entirely in the...
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
Your point about the plowing and maintenance, because there are apartments, you know, plowing the driveway, consideration has to be made then as to the parking area because the tenants would have to get out, be able to get out of the park, be able to get to the road to get out. So if it's a slippery slope, you might be going down if an agreement's not reached with the developer as to how that plowing and maintenance is going to be taken care of going forward.
I agree a little bit. I think if I could show you, I can only show you a Google map of what it is today, but I can kind of describe what we're talking about. Larry had a question, too. Go ahead and ask your question, while I'm...
No, I wanted to explore the circle back process that you suggested we might do after you reintroduced the seventeen articles.
So I don't know, but this is better than Old Town. So this is the driveway that's there today. Obviously, there's the mailboxes we talked about. This is where the bank and apartments above will be, and then there'll be parking in this section here. So what we're just talking about is having, instead of them exiting out right here, we're going to have a connection right here, and then, you know, combine this so that they're all going out at one spot. And if, I can show you, the plan has been submitted to the planning board of having that up at town meeting. We're only talking about, you know, so it'll be, it won't be where the parking area is that is combined with the town. It'll only be that they'll exit out, you know, they're going to basically exit out under this, and then they're all going to come out at that entrance, so.
Does that mean they're going to enter from the other one, Jack?
There's going to be a, well, they need a, this, this, that's a good question.
It's only, you know, we can totally widen up for one way there.
And I've been, I've been told by the police department that is actually a two-way road, just so you know. But we will make sure that it's safely done, yes. I bought a Chevy, and I've seen him drive the wrong way. And he drives, how many o'clock away is it? What's that?
Back.
It's your back. There will be exits over here on Union Street as well, so not all the traffic coming in. And there's, I think we're talking about four apartments, so it's not like, you know, a big, huge complex.
One hundred forty feet, right?
It's not one hundred forty feet, no. Actually, I think we're ready to start circling around. It's Larry.
Yeah, great. Two things, okay? When we, most recently started talking about the stretch code, trying to figure out
Turn the light.
what it all meant, it made sense to us to put together something that we could hand out to people. So we put together a frequently asked questions on one piece of paper for everybody to see and to digest as they might. Ladies over there, if you would, anybody that's interested, they pick up a copy or a donation you want, and we'll be handing those out at the train station on Monday, Tuesday, prior to the town meeting. The second thing is, it's not about the stretch code. The stretch code is a stepping stone. It's a prerequisite to becoming a green community. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table because we are not a recognized green community. The stretch code is the fifth and last criteria that we have to satisfy in order to put the DOE to consider us a green community. And if there's a need, North Fork is a green community. And if we can get to that point, there's no limit to what we can do. We can get up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for project grants from DOE for energy efficiency projects that we can come up with. The designation grant, which DOE would reward to North Fork if and when we become a green community, is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the day that they decide that we're a green community and we've satisfied the criteria, we get a check for a hundred and forty thousand, and then we can get up to two hundred and fifty thousand projects that we propose to DOE in the future, following that initiation. So it's, I just don't want people to get hung up on, it's the stretch code. The stretch code is a stepping stone. It's always, it's a prerequisite to becoming a green community, and a green community is important because there's a whole other money out there waiting for the town to qualify for. Thank you.
Just can you clarify for me? I was doing some research online on it, and I was just talking to this woman here before she left. Is, is the requirements only applicable to new construction or is it renovations and new construction?
Only new construction.
Okay, because online I saw it applied to renovations as well.
They changed the stretch code in two thousand seventeen, January, they changed it.
But that doesn't mean that they can't change it in the future to include any renovations that you do as well?
We have the option to, to add a program in the future and to un-adopt, if you will, the stretch code. There's always that opportunity available. If, if the state does something to change the stretch code in a way that is a community believing is detrimental to the, to the, to the town, then we can, we can vote at town meeting to un-adopt the stretch code.
In terms of, you said if designated, if we're designated by adopting the stretch code a green community, we get a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
When they designate, is that money, is there a plan to use that money for some sort of green initiative? And if so, does the plan need to be submitted back to the state and approved to the state in order to receive the funds?
Okay. The way that it works is, the way that it works is, when we are designated by the county, we would get a check for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Typically, what that means is that seed money for us to put together the project grant applications for the subsequent year.
Thank you. So can you just clarify if you put an addition on your wall? Does the addition have to meet the stretch code?
No. No, it's only, it's only for new residential construction and new commercial construction, where that commercial construction is either over a hundred thousand square feet or is greater than forty thousand square feet and is a high energy consumer. That is to say, if it's a refrigerated warehouse or if it's a supermarket, then it would fall into the stretch code. But again, it's only new construction.
Somebody, I only recently learned that somebody said that forty B's are standards.
They are, no, they're not, example. They, they would, the stretch code would apply to that because they're residential units. That's the, that's the, the way it's been described to me by DOE is, the key is on the residential aspect of the property.
Okay, that's good. That wasn't really bothering me, the example, the forty B's.
Jack, just a quick question. Have you, I know this is a little bit to do with the stretch code, but have you had a chance to talk to any businesses that may be interested in coming to North Fork if we adopt the stretch code? If that's something because of the higher requirements for building that would preclude them choosing North Fork as a place to construct and conduct business? Because we do need a commercial base. You know, we need to increase our commercial base here in North Fork, and this is something that's detrimental to us if we're trying to increase our commercial base.
And I, I have not. I personally have not. I think our planner probably has had, Ray and Richard. You know, I think that kind of related to that, you know, one of my concerns is that, you know, not all towns around us have adopted the stretch code, so it does put us at a competitive...
But some have, I mean...
Some have.
Right, so it's not...
So, yeah, no, it's not...
What do you mean, only town?
No, 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 we wouldn't be, certainly would not be singing ourselves out. I think, like you said, one hundred eighty-five communities have, I know Rentham hasn't, Foxborough hasn't. I think Plano has.
Frankly, just, they're just adopted the stretch code.
Yeah. You know, it doesn't just apply to commercial, applies to residential as well, although they're not, you know, there's a competitive advantage. And some people will look at the stretch code being an advantage, you know, that they're going to get a more fuel-efficient house, more fuel-efficient commercial structure, so, you know, it might be, they know that the building has to be built to a higher level, a higher...
People could choose to, you know, at a new construction, people could choose to have the builder use the higher grade, the higher efficiency as opposed to being mandated.
Yeah.
It's, it's a choice.
I would agree.
I'd like to make a general comment, not relate to any article in particular, and that I found this meeting quite useful, and I'd like to thank everybody. I don't mean this to sound like I want to hint anything, but I'd like to thank all the town officials, whether employees or volunteers, whether appointed or elected, and everybody this year. I think this is useful, and I appreciate the participation of everybody.
Well, thank you. And it's been, good, I actually did this a long time ago and got away from it, so it's good to get back in the swing of things. Yeah, I don't want to keep anybody who wants to get going from going. Well, you reminded me of one thing, I don't know why, but that, of course, the question about the appointed versus elected, that still does have to go to the ballot, so if it is approved at town meeting, it still has to go through the ballot in the spring. And that's why we actually wanted to do it in the fall so that we can then go to the spring town meeting. If we did it at the spring town meeting, that would be after the election, so we'd have to wait another whole year. So we generally prefer to have big things like that discussed at the annual town meeting, but because of time, it makes more sense to do it here, and the whole town would get a crack at it one way or another at the ballot question.
Is that the only article that then goes to the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. From some of the comments on Facebook, did you cover the process of what goes through putting something on the warrant and when the general citizens get to see it?
Sure. The warrant gets opened probably three to four months ahead of town meeting. The selectmen vote to open the warrant, then go through a process of about six weeks of collecting articles. Generally, they come in on the last day, and then at the next selectmen's meeting, they vote to close the warrant. It's still at a point where we are sometimes wordspitting articles at that point, especially with town council. I recently learned from my esteemed moderator that petition articles can be submitted all the way up until the point that the warrant is actually posted. So, so you need a hundred signatures for a warrant article for a special town meeting, ten signatures at the annual town meeting, so it's a much lower threshold at town meeting for some reason. That's a state law.
So because I've watched most meetings on NCTV, I know that the selectmen sort of review it, and then it gets to the advisory board, and people post the articles after support it
Yeah.
to the advisory board, and then it gets printed, and then the citizen goes, oh, I didn't know it was a need.
No, you know, and Carol and actually predecessor brought a system into the town, it's the town calendar. That's a fancier name. My town government.
My town government.
On the website, and I know we're transitioning. We have both websites going right now, but you can get to it from either one. My town government will go there and you can, you can sign up for, to be pummeled with more email to get notices of, you can pick a committee. So in this case, I would pick the advisory committee and the selectmen. And every time they post a meeting, you'll get an email saying what the agenda's going to be. But I, back to your point, I encourage people to use that so that you can attend, if you're interested in a town meeting and kind of knowing what's going on, attend either the selectmen's meeting where we generally talk, we'll talk about the budget in February, March, and April, and at the same point, attend the live meetings where they'll debate the pros and cons of all these articles during their process, which generally is in the spring, probably about three months leading up to town meeting.
Wouldn't you like to have a local community? So you're sort of receiving the comments.
Yeah, which is not an official town boundary.
Not at all.
Very...
So I'm just curious about the communication because we did, we've been away for, I don't know, a couple of weeks or something, and we came home today, and there was a postcard saying the town meeting was in December fifth.
Yeah.
But aren't there other ways to communicate to people, even that the other town meeting, the one that was supposed to be in twice already until November?
Right.
November fourteen?
We said before, November fourteen, then we had to move it.
Right, and couldn't there be something located in town that would tell, tell us that as well? That town meeting is going to be the state? And also, and I'm not quite sure how the system works, but the telephone, robo, telephone call.
Yeah.
Could you not use that to tell people, or is that only for emergencies?
We definitely try to use it, because we got to, you know, we definitely try to use that just for emergencies. We are actually planning, planning to do that probably Friday to send out a reverse, call it reverse nine-one-one message to everybody that, you know, hopefully they get the postcard, but if they, if they can, you know, go to the website or come down to four or five different locations around town and pick up a warrant if they want. Generally, you know, historically, we've mailed out the warrant, but because this is a relatively small town meeting, you can mail, traditionally, a full town meeting, we only get about eighty people. I think, I think with the stretch code, we'll probably get more than that at this meeting, but it seemed like a very big expense to print out thirty-five hundred warrants and mail them all out. Not only that, it's time consuming, so we went with the electronic format this year.
Did you mean instead of the postcards? We said in addition.
In addition to...
I think at the spring town meeting, we'll still mail out the warrant.
But the reverse nine-one-one, do you have to sign up for that? Or is that...
It picks up, it picks up the white pages, if you know, the old traditional, it picks up the white pages automatically. You can sign up and add your cell phone to that if you want, or add, you know, for some reason...
A cell phone?
If you have an unlisted number, you'd have to sign up.
Or if you want for a cell phone?
You can add your cell phone, yeah. You can either, you can call my office and we'll add it for you, or there is a connection on the website to add it.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, Fran, I've used it for elections to just remind people of how elections because of such a low turnout, and I get, I get every bit as many complaints about using it. As we do, then people are really happy about it. People don't feel that it's a good use of, A, you know, a reverse emergency system. So that's, that was a double inch, so we...
Any other questions about any article?
So, Jack, this is a plea for transparency. I know that under the open meeting law, meetings are open, except for sessions, but why do people can't attend over meetings? So if a lot going on... So, there's a lot going on, often multiple meetings simultaneously. And there isn't a way of being, being at all of them. And I know from past years at least, there's been a sort of packing of correspondence, correspondence associated with each and warrant article where, you know, there's, the article is proposed, there's, you know, discussions between the town administrator and the proposers or the advisory committee or the town council. And in the past, you've been willing to share that on paper, at least occasionally.
You just have like my little boxes in the bottom of the warrant? Yeah, I mean, I, so the updated warrant, you, I'm sure, David, because you're an early adopter, you've got the early version. When I updated it Monday afternoon, it has my little boxes on there that has little descriptions.
But I guess I'm asking for more than that. I'm asking for the email exchanges that have gone back and forth about each warrant article. And I know that, you know, there's an argument in favor of transparency and there's an argument against it. And, you know, I won't go through each of the arguments, but I'm saying, well, other, you know, I wouldn't force this on anybody, but it would be very nice if that collection of information were made available on the website so that people who wanted to see the discussion that had happened about warrant articles could in fact see who was saying what and how they supported their positions.
Yeah, I don't recall. I mean, I don't remember doing that in the past. I may have, and I'm getting older, I forgetful. But I guess I'm not eager to, you know, start posting all my emails out on, you know, they're public records, so people have been asking for them. But certainly, with town council, there's probably a lot of legal advice that I'd have to, you know, due diligence, assume of the question.
David, if you, if you want, if you want to see all of it back and forth, it's not done by email. It's, it's done in the meetings. I mean, it has to be, it has to be posted, it's voted. So, you can request the minutes of both the advisory board and the board of selectmen's office. But there's, there's no discussion back and forth on, I mean, Brian is a member of the advisory committee here tonight. It's all done in the meeting. So, I think the minutes would be your best.
So, people have been very forthcoming and sharing things in the past, which I certainly appreciate. I remember, and you know that, you know, I've been asking for early drafts of the warrant. And there was a time, I don't know, three or four years ago, where somebody shared with me a draft of the warrant that had multiple pages of discussion about each of the warrant articles, you know, while they were thinking about it and, you know, going back and forth and saying...
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about, Eric.
Yeah. Great, showed to me. I kind of, I don't remember doing that either. But we probably did it, but maybe not intentionally. Any other, any other questions? I thank you all very much for coming tonight. It's, thank you, it was a good discussion. I look forward to doing it in the spring.